We're going to call the meeting for Akron City Council to order. Cloak or read the rule. Taylor, Connor, Freeman, Fusco, Kammer, Lombardo, McKittrick, Malik, Neil, Amobian, Samples, Somerville, Swirsky. At this time, for those who voluntarily wish to do so, will you please stand as we are led in prayer by Councilman Freeman, immediately following our prayer, will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman McKintrick.
We bow our heads together. Father, we come to you tonight, first thing we confess is our need. We confess God, our insufficiency, yet we believe that you are all sufficient. And so we ask that you, on the seat, would keep a watch over our hearts, mouths, everything we say, everything we do, that we would speak to one another, even as we desire to speak to. Thank you, God, that you placed us on this council, and thank you, God, that you called us to serve, and asked that we might serve with all due diligence right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from our previously held meeting have been provided to all council members. Are there any corrections or additions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Baylor, Connor, Freeman, Fusco, Kammer, Lombardo, McKittrick, Malik, Neil, Amobian, Samples, Somerville, Swirsky.
Before you, you have the consent agenda. Is there motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Again, roll call and final passage. Baylor, Connor, Freeman, Fusco, Kammer, Lombardo, McKittrick, Malik, Neil, Amobian, Samples, Somerville, Swirsky.
We do have one public hearing this evening, so I'm going to ask if there's anyone here in the audience that is here to speak on our public hearing regarding the capital investment community development program, if you'll please stand at this time. I'm also going to ask if there's anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak during our public comment period. If you filled out a written request and you'd like to speak at our public comment period, I'm going to ask that you also stand, so that you may be sworn in by a member of our law department. So those speaking at public comment period, and also speaking during our public hearing. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear? And also, please stand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, nothing but the truth? Say aye do. Thank you.
Okay, public notice, notice hereby given, the following, the public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, January 27th, 2020, during a regular council meeting, 7:00 PM, in Akron City Council. Chambers at 166 South High Street, upon an ordinance authorizing the 2020 Capital Investment and Community Development Program.
Mrs. Tomic?
Good evening, Madam President, council members. The city administration annually prepares a capital investment community development program for council consideration. The budget specifies the types, locations, costs, and general descriptions of capital investments planned for the upcoming year. The capital investment program includes the following: street and sidewalk improvements, improvements to parks, improvements to public facilities, the purchase of vehicles for police, fire, and public services, purchase of two fire engines, debt service capacity financed through capital projects, and water and sewer system upgrades. The objectives of the capital budget are to construct or reallocate facilities vital to Akron residents, to encourage private investment thereby increasing the city's tax base, leveraging federal, state, and private funds whenever possible for funded, capital-funded projects, and to provide capital improvements in support of long-term growth. The 2020 capital investment budget is approximately $323 million. This includes $107 million of local funds, $5.1 million of regional resources, $167 million from the state of Ohio, $36 million of federal funds, and 8.2 million of private sources. This afternoon, we conducted a presentation for council members focusing on transportation, parks, recreation, public facilities, housing and community development services, and economic development as well. Monday, February 3rd, we will conclude our presentation of the capital budget, and that will include water and sewer capital needs. And then we request passage by City Council by February 10th, as required by the charter. It has to be passed by February 15th, so your last meeting will be on February 10th. Having said that, any questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak against? Anyone here wishes to speak against this ordinance? Seeing and hearing now, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco?
Thank you, President. Somerville, I would like to pull the committee to refer this item. Kammer, Swirsky, Baylor, Samples. Samples, thank you. For the committees to refer this item, as we'd heard, that we will be reviewing the public utilities portion next Monday at 4:00. Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Fusco, what's your pleasure on the rest of the agenda?
Time, thanks.
Time will be granted. We'll now move into our new business.
Item number one, offered by Fusco. Ordinance approving with modification, the renewal application of Frank S. and Mary Politz to have an agricultural property at 1661 Drysback Drive, placed in an agricultural district pursuant to the Revised Code, Section 929.01, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
Prefer. Item number two, offered by Fusco. Ordinance authorizing conditional use to establish a child daycare business center at 1204 Coral Drive and declaring emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
Prefer.
This item will be referred?
Item number three, offered by Fusco. Ordinance authorizing conditional use to establish a child daycare business center at 1170 Diagonal Road.
Councilman Fusco?
Prefer.
This item will be referred?
Item number four, offered by Fusco. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to construct a discount store on the south side of North Case Avenue, across from Bank Street, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
Prefer.
This item will also be referred?
Okay, item number five, offered by Fusco in Somerville. Ordinance authorizing Director of Public Service, without the formality of advertising for bids, to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Ohio and Erie Canalway Coalition for it and the city to act as a project manager for various projects associated with the Summit Lake Vision Plan, Lot 2, 3, and 4, and the Rubber City Heritage Trail, approving Summit Lake, approving the Summit Lake Vision Plan and budget, authorizing the mayor to apply for and expend grant funds in furtherance of the project or projects, expressing support for the Director of Public Service designated as public access areas around Summit Lake, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
For the committees, it's favorable with the request for suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended?
Yes, thank you. This is, without the formality of advertising for bids, but entering into an agreement with Dan Rice, Executive Director, and the Erie Canalway Coalition, who has basically been responsible for years and years and years of helping us, the City of Akron, as well as all those along the canal, get the tow path, et cetera, projects like that going, started and completed. Akron was the first community to have ours completed, and that was, a lot of that was to do with Mr. Rice. Today, this afternoon, we heard about the Summit Lake Vision Plan for Lots 2, 3, and 4, and what's going on there, where we're going to see hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars invested in that community, as well as, we heard a report about the Rubber City Heritage Trail, which is, that project is underway and hoping in a few years to see that one take wing and take off. This would be entering into that agreement for management services with the Erie Canal Coalition, and based on our review this afternoon and the track record of the Erie Canalway Coalition, recommend approval this evening on this.
The rules have been suspended, and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it with one abstention.
Item number six, oh, let's vote on this first. Roll call and final passage. Baylor, Connor, Freeman, Fusco, Kammer, Lombardo, McKittrick, Malik, Neil, Amobian, Samples, Somerville, Swirsky. Item number six, offered by Samples and Kammer. Ordinance determined to proceed with the improvement of Waterloo Road between the termini of Manchester Road and Glenmount Avenue by resurfacing and declaring emergency.
Councilperson Samples?
Thank you, Madam President. We ask for this item to go on the consent agenda, please.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda?
Item number seven, offered by Samples. Ordinance determined to proceed with the improvement of Waterloo Road between the termini of Glenmount Avenue and Kelly Avenue by resurfacing and declaring emergency.
Councilperson Samples?
Consent, please.
This item will also be placed on the consent agenda?
Item number eight, offered by President Somerville. Ordinance amending and/or supplementing Title V, Chapter 53, Special Assessments, Section 53.03, Procedure of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Akron, to increase the period of appointment of freeholders of the city on the member list of the Assessment Equalization Board to four years and declaring emergency.
Councilperson Samples?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee's report is favorable, and we're asking for suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended?
We wish to increase the amount of time from one to four years in this ordinance.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended, and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Baylor, Connor, Freeman, Fusco, Kammer, Lombardo, McKittrick, Malik, Neil, Amobian, Samples, Somerville, Swirsky. Item number nine, offered by Kammer. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designated to accept a grant from the Holland Memorial Fund to support the REACH program of the Akron Fire Department, authorizing the expenditure of funds and the provision of services consistent with the grant and the REACH program, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Kammer?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee's report is to place this item on the consent agenda, please.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda?
Item number 10, offered by Kammer. Ordinance authorizing Director of Law to enter into a contract with Summit County Public Defenders Commission to provide legal services for indigent defendants in the Akron Municipal Court in accordance with the requirements of the Constitution of the United States with respect to the provisions of legal representation to indigent defendants and declaring emergency.
Councilman Kammer?
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, the committee's report is to place this item on the consent agenda, please.
This item will also be placed on the consent agenda? We will now go to the portion of our meeting that we refer to as our public comment period. When you hear your name, I'm going to ask that you please approach the podium. You will have three minutes to speak to this body. Speakers are reminded that this is an official meeting. Remarks should be kept respectful and remain the council business. Speakers should refrain from making any personal attacks. Anyone who breaches decorum will be ruled out of order and may be removed from council chambers. Lisa King?
Good evening. Thank you for having me in front of your body this evening. I'm here to talk about the Metro Parks and our upcoming levy. Metro Parks is going to be 100 years old next year. It's our centennial. And as we prepare for that, it reminds me that we started as Akron Metropolitan Park District. Our four flagship parks are within the city of Akron, and soon to have our fifth outlet at Summit Lake with our nature center. So I just want to celebrate that, and we will be celebrating that next year as part of our centennial. We are coming to the end of our seven-year levy. We are on the ballot on March 17th, and the reason I wanted to come to you tonight was to bring you the information about our levy message. We are going to be asking for a small increase, and I want to tell you what that is about. Our previous levy was in 2013, and it was a renewal. Prior to that, it was 2006, and we asked for a small increase. So that was the last time that we had asked for new money, and that's 14 years. The important thing about that is, during that time, we've grown. We've added 5,000 acres that we added to our management, totaling 14,000 acres now. We've also increased our visitation by a million, and also added five new parks. So in that time, we are proud of that, but that, of course, has been difficult in that the cost to take care of the park district has increased while our funds have remained the same. So we are coming before our taxpayers on March 17th to ask for a small increase. That always looks at a property value of $100,000, $100,000 property value. For that property value, it would be $1.58 increase per month. Knowing that an average price for an Akron home is less than that, I can't tell you exactly what it would be, but it would be less than $1.50 per month. So it's difficult for me to be able to zero in on that for you as much as I'd like to. So what I'm doing tonight is just trying to raise the awareness about our issue. We're going to be on the ballot. We certainly would like your vote, but I want you to have the information so that you can make up your own mind. I have endorsement forms that are available. If council members would choose to endorse individually, we would appreciate that. I think that the clerk has those for you, if you'd like that. I'm also here to answer any questions about that, if you would like me to. I did that quick.
You did.
Well, thank you for hearing me this evening.
All right, Lisa, thank you so much, and thank you for being such a strong community partner in the city.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Fatima?
Hi, I'm Fatima Rita, 330-958-4900. Anybody wants to call me, go right ahead. I own a lot of rental property in Akron, and I'm going to be paying around $22,000 in real estate taxes next month, so that is how I make my money. Today, I was at the water department paying my water bills, and there was another landlord there, and he was kind of upset because I guess tenants weren't paying it, and he had to pay shut offs and all extra fees and blah, blah, blah. And it points out the need to do something with the water department. First of all, I'd like to have the water bills put in the tenant's name, and they be responsible. Regardless, if the tenant doesn't pay the first month, the second month, they should pay all of it, or be shut off within like 10 days or whatever, so that we don't have that long of a deal to let the water bills go on and on, and let people think, they learn how to be, if you just give them a little bit, if they want to pay a little bit, then they just keep doing that. They won't pay it all off. So we need to change that. I'm here ready, willing, and able to do whatever it takes to do it. And then, secondly, I know we have the issues of the tenant eviction situation. I've had a lot of rental properties over the years, and done a lot of evictions. I think Akron is one of the best places to evict tenants. I would say on the QT here, it's better than Coggo Falls when I evicted people. Akron, you go there, do you own the property? You say yes. And if you're a lawyer and you want to change this, does that mean a lawyer can't represent you? You have to be your own person here or whatever? And first of all, nobody else is going to want to evict somebody that isn't their tenant. So we need to keep the way the system is now. It's very good. If a tenant doesn't pay, they should be on a list that they didn't pay. And one of the issues is, I had a tenant that moved out, handed me the keys, I left, I came back the next day, to my great dismay, he made a copy of the key and let himself in, and he was hanky panky and with a woman. Now, who knows what was going on there, but I was a little scared. The girl down the road, but the guy kind of was yaky yaky here. Anyways, the rich should be allowed, if the landlord says that I want to evict them, and they didn't pay the rent, they need to go. So everything should be more towards teaching people how to be. If a tenant thinks, oh, if I leave, then I can get my case dismissed, they're going to do that on every case they have. They're going to keep doing that. And you don't know how to keep track of that. If a person gets evicted, that means they couldn't pay, and then sometimes, how should I say, they don't pay, but there's other issues. I had a tenant that three neighbors called me complaining about what he was doing, and he wasn't that good of a person in my house. He made a mess of my house, and I ended up evicting him for non-payment. Now, he was like one day behind, but he said he could only pay part, and I knew there was going to be problems, so I can't have somebody like that. So I felt in a crazy way, it was my duty to keep the neighborhood nice and decent, and make the neighbors happy.
Your time's up.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Fatima, for sharing. Harrington Hargrove?
Good evening, council. My name is Harrington Hargrove. I'm calling in reference to a GARR report. It was in October 2018, and this is two years since then. And it stated that our black population is just completely cut out from growth and economic in the current economy. And I use these words intentionally. "They are excluded from economic opportunities," said James Hardy, Akron's Mayor, Don Horik and Chief of Staff. "This is not about participating, they're excluded." This is more than just a moral imperative. Two years since this report, and the black community have seen no improvement, not even a plan to uplift us. I mean, I come here on a regular basis in reference to this very thing, GARR report. I've been saying this for 30 years plus, and council hasn't really haven't uplifted us, haven't allocated, came up with a plan that's going to uplift us. And morally, that's not right. And this says here, this is the mayor's chief of staff saying this. And so, when will this council do something? All this knowledge in here, all this brain power, and you can't figure out to include us? To include? Not make up no special thing, but to include us? All this body, and you can't figure out a plan to include us? I've been asking this body to do something. I'm not the only one. There's a lot of black people in this town that want to do something, but they get discouraged when they come down here. Because when they come down here, you're going to get no. You're not going to get a response. You're not going to get not one thing that's going to uplift us. And I'm asking this body why? I know I can't speak to y'all individually, but I can speak to council, my council lady, and I want to know why. It's not that difficult to allocate some funding. You get over $6 million a year under the Community Development Block Grant. So for 30 years, that's $150 million this county, and our community, what have we received out of that $150 million? And really, if you go back 40 years, I give the council slack when I say 30, but 40 years, when Mr. Sykes was running for office, this issue was before you. So that's almost 40 years. And what have you done to uplift us? And so, all I'm asking this council, what I always do, is formulate a plan. You have the means to do it, all it takes is inclusion. So I'm going to leave before I hear the beat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrove. Jackie Easley?
Good evening, I'm Jackie Easley with the Fourth Ward. I'm speaking in concern for like Friday night, it was an Amber Alert that went out. And so, us the citizens, where do you go after you've received the Amber Alert? And you don't know where to go, to know if it was resolved, or, you know, you want to, you know, so you spend a couple of days kind of worrying about what happened to the child. So I don't know what could be done about that, but it's a concern of mine. So that's all I had tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Easley. We'll see if we can get that answer for you. Willard?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for taking the time, and I know it's a busy day for all of the councilmen and women, so I do appreciate. I'd also like to talk about the Metro Parks really quickly. I was going to actually help my mom, but I take my kid, my mom is taking me to Metro Parks. I mean, I've visited Jordan and other countries, in the United States and even northeast Ohio. I mean, it's, we have a hell of a system. So, I mean, we take advantage of it. You know, I hope that my son, for the next, you know, 80 years that he's alive, 90 years hopefully, that he can enjoy that. So what I wanted to talk about is Rule 29 and 39. Hopefully, I can be articulated a little bit more to what my mom said. So I've been helping her with real estate since I was five years old, five or six years old, in kindergarten, my first gift for Christmas was a toolbox. So this is kind of what I do, and I take pride in Akron. You know, I've told my mom, you know, it's gotten worse, you should go out of it, but she continues to say that she loves Akron, she wants to stay here. And I think what we want is the ability to help the citizens of Akron, you know, pay their rent, pay their water bills, give them the tools to do that. A lot of times, they can't, you know, my mom doesn't tell you all the times with saying that there is a vacant house next door, and say, hey, Willard, go cut the grass over there, go pick up the stone, so they don't end up breaking in there. We do that on a regular basis because we care about Akron. In September of 2019, we had an issue where we had a tenant going into the house, this was a house on 1411 Deets, where the neighbor next door, unfortunately, he's a bit of a drinker, and he can lash out at our tenants, and they don't usually stay there that long. He got in an argument with the tenant, and he kept calling her the N-word, and kept calling her family the N-word. I don't know about you, but how they held their composure was beyond me. So, you know, we care about our tenants, we want them to succeed in life. So, you know, we care. I see all these articles about how landlords don't care. Unfortunately, there are bad people. But, you know, we deal with this on a regular basis. Another example is on 1190 Hazel, where we, my mom had a land contract with someone to buy the house, you know, it'd be great, do a land contract, let them own the house. This person disappeared on us, we come to the house, there's someone else there. We tell that person, hey, you know, you can't live there, and he said, well, I signed a contract with somebody else. And I said, okay, well, my mom said, you know, can I find someone else for you? So she found somewhere else, he's living somewhere else, we made that situation better. Well, turns out, there was someone else squatting in the house. Now typically, if you go to someone that's in your house, you call Akron Police, right? Well, we had to file an eviction to get a squatter out of a house, our house. You know, I can't go there and move their stuff, I can't do any of that, because we want to do- want to do what's right and follow the law, and more of this is coming on the owner and the landlord. We want to work with them as much as possible. We want to work with the council, we want to give them tools and resources, bus passes, have them understand what the water bill is, have them understand how to use something correctly, how to keep their house heated economically. So we really just want to, you know, help improve and do whatever we can to help. I know that, you know, we're, my mom has been here a lot. Other members of the Akron RIA are willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing. Walid, we will now go to the portion, we will announce our committee assignments, Budget and Finance, Housing and Neighborhood Assistance, Planning and Economic Development, Public Service, Rules, Health and Social Services, Parks and Rec, Public Safety, Public Utilities and Green Committee. Is there anything else coming before this body?
Motion.
One second, I'm sorry. Councilperson Samples?
Sorry, I just want to be really brief. I just didn't want this day to go by without mentioning yesterday, and for a moment, this world stood still because we lost a giant. Not only did we lose a giant, someone who impacted many on the court, he was a philanthropist, and most of all, a father and a husband off the court, and I think yesterday made all of us sit and really think about life. Not only did we lose Kobe Bryant, that family lost a daughter, another family lost four members in one family, you lost a dad, a mother, a daughter, a brother, you lost a pilot, you lost another mother and a daughter, and I think we need to make sure we hold all of those families up in our prayers, and if we could take a moment of silence for them, I think it would be appreciated by all. Thank you.
Before we adjourn, Councilwoman Sworowski?
Turn your mic on there, Rich. Thank you. Well, get closer to the mic then. Try it, it works.
Can you hear me now?
I think your mic needs to be serviced, but just project.
Okay, so we've already spent more time talking about it than I talked, but one of the nicest things about living in Akron is our proximity to parks. It's, you know, it's not only just a nice thing, though, it's an effective argument for living in this area for attracting new people, which is one of our goals stated by our city government. So I urge you all to support the levy, and don't just support it, don't just lend your name to it, but I hope that everybody actively campaigns in their war through the door-to-door, emails, whatever direct mail you already have going out. Urge everybody in a variety of ways to support the levy. It is really important.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, just one quick announcement, then, Councilman Neal. On next Monday, February 3rd, we will do a council group photo and also individual headshots for our website. So just going to ask if all council members can be here on Monday at 6:15, 6:15 on Monday. Councilman Neal?
Thank you, Madam President. Of course, this past Monday was Dr. King's birthday, and our own leader Sykes gave a dynamic speech at the annual speech at the library, and it resonates with me because part of her speech talked about Dr. King's letter from the Birmingham Jail, where a lot of people were telling him, a lot of clergy were telling him, just be patient, be quiet, don't make any noise, just wait, just wait, just wait. It resonates with me with what Mr. Hargrove says, because many of us in this room didn't need the GARR report to be able to say that. So I've got to say it again, I'm, this burns within me, that we don't have a plan. So it behooves us as a council, before we get out of this first quarter, to have some type of plan to address probably the most damning report to come out on this city, such as the GARR report. We owe that to our constituents. And so, you know, it sits with me because as she spoke, her words resonated, how Dr. King's message back then is still relevant today, and as we've been challenged by one of our constituents, this council needs to have a plan. I can't remember Dr. King's quote, but one of his quotes talks about not so much those who speak out, spoke out against him, but those who were silent. We cannot afford to be silent as a council. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Neal. I think we have a motion for adjournment. Seeing no objections, we are adjourned.